It's money from the government for infrastructure things, roads and stuff.
Okay.
Tell me when you're ready, Kyle. It's 6:30.
Kyle, quick question. Will anybody be sharing their screen today?
Don't we have something from GHD?
We do.
All right, so I think we're ready to begin.
Kyle, did you hear that question? You answered?
What's the question?
About if anyone is going to be sharing a screen. Someone, I think maybe Rosa asked that question. Someone asked that question.
Yeah, so Rebecca Crowe is just entering the room and she may need to share a screen or I may need to share a screen, so.
I'll go ahead and change that setting then.
All right, thank you, Rosa.
Okay, so ready to go?
Yes.
Call to order the regular meeting of the Rayadale City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Might be on mute, Gordon.
Looks like he disappeared.
Yeah, he's currently not on the list.
Okay. Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
She was here a minute ago, too.
We're losing it. They're dropping light blocks.
Julie, are you present?
I don't see her number anywhere.
City Manager Knob.
Here.
Chief of Police Connor.
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham.
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell. Water Roadway Superintendent Jensen. Wastewater Superintendent Taylor.
Here.
And City Clerk Dunham is present. Thank you. I guess we should go back to Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Are you available? Are you present?
He's there, but he's muted. Let's see.
Okay, and, okay, and Councilmember Woodall?
I don't see her.
Okay. Thank you.
Deborah, I'm here, I think.
Okay, thank you, Gordon.
Okay.
I will say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any public comments?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
And no emails received.
Thank you. Then we will move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Is there any public on the line that had raised or email that wishes to remove anything from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
It'll move by Johnson.
A motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall, is she present yet? No? Mayor Garne?
Yes. Motion passes for, I think, zero. Julie, whenever you're here, if you're here, let us know. Thank you. And now we will move to the city manager's and staff update, please. Page nineteen in your packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. So from just the city manager, I've been working on setting up our Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee, which will occur back on January twenty eighth. We've also been working on preparing our utility ad hoc meeting regarding the rates. And then we've also been working on preparation for a PAVE project and submission of a bid opportunity. So there's been a lot going on this past couple of weeks just in terms of everything you see on the agenda. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has and then also detail throughout the report from pages nineteen through twenty-two are also the staff reports. So we're available to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. It looks like activity at three fifty-five Center has decreased greatly. Does the chief have any comment on that?
The person causing the most problems at three fifty-five Center was convinced to leave and that's dropped our number of calls there significantly. In the last report, there were six calls all related to that one person within a two-day period, so. That's the main reason why it's so low. And overall, the calls for service over the holidays were relatively low for the rest of the city, too.
Great news. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Carter?
No questions now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Just one on the water. You said something about water and shore rate setting. Were we supposed to have an ad hoc committee thing for an RFP?
Correct. So we're, right now, we're in the process of assembling the material for the meeting and then we'll be scheduling. So we'll be working with you and Councilmember Johnson to find a time that works for both of you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think, I don't know if I had any other ones. At this time, I don't think I have any other questions. I did, and I did want to make a comment on the picture that was in our box of the council members that you, you put in our boxes, and I wanted to thank you for that.
And the thanks goes to Mayor Garne for putting that photo together.
A nice photo.
And Julie's still not here?
I'm not seeing her on the list.
Okay. Okay, then, and I have no questions at this time. So we will now move on. To an update from the Chief of Police on Measure Z. Page thirty-three of the packet.
Actually, we're on item.
Wait a minute. Oh, no, the city manager. I'm sorry. The presentation and update from the city engineer. Excuse me. So I will throw that back to you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. So around this time, we do an annual update with the city engineers to check in to see where we're at with various projects throughout town. We do have Rebecca Crowe with GHD, the city's engineer firm, available. And Rebecca has a PowerPoint presentation, which Rebecca, just for Zoom purposes, I need to make sure that if Rebecca's unable to screen share, I can try to figure out how to do that as well. So Rebecca, do you have the PowerPoint or do you need?
Let me try and screen share. It may ask you. Let's see, share.
There.
Okay. And then let's see if I put it in prison. Hi, everyone. Let's see. Yes. Okay, sorry. Technology's always, yeah, a little bit of a success. Yeah, thank you, Kyle. And yeah, thank you, council, for having me here and see some new faces on the council. So I'm excited to give an update. And so just what I'm going to go over today, you know, just some of the basic systems. We're going to talk a little bit about the transportation system, the current ATP project, and another project we have that we're looking at. The water system, the current SRF planning project that we're doing, and hazard mitigation funding opportunity. We'll talk a little bit about what we're doing on the wastewater side as well. So first, an update on the safety and community outreach project. Here's an overview and, you know, some background. So Nathan Sanger, who I work with closely, has really been the one, you know, leading this project. It's a one-point-five-million-dollar project. You know, the city added about five percent to that fund or to that amount for city funds and just really made a great project. So you can see we're pretty much complete. We're almost done construction, just a couple of little punch list items. And then the non-infrastructure component has been a little bit stymied because of COVID. But we're working with Redwood Community Action Agency to finish off that piece. And then just, you know, just really a shout out and also just want to congratulate the community. Everybody in the council over time has worked really hard to make sure that this project has resulted in, you know, the best and highest use of funds. So major project work is complete. The final punch list items are going to be finished in the next two weeks. In addition to the original project scope, the following items have been completed as part of this project. So five hundred and twelve feet of sidewalk on Wildwood beneath the one-on-one overpass, resurfacing of Wildwood between Bellevue and Yaloha Streets, seventy-two feet of sidewalk extension on Loa, replacement of three hundred feet of sidewalk adjacent to the library, replacement of two curb ramps adjacent to City Hall, a slurry seal and stripping of Wildwood between Bellevue and Painter Streets, a thousand five hundred and thirty-six feet of new sidewalks on Davis, and eighty feet of new sidewalk on Wildwood. So just a great job. That project's, and I think, ending on a good note. So, yeah, great work. And then, so eyes on the next project. You know, projects take time and work. You know, the first time we applied for that ATP grant to do the project, you know, we're just finishing up. We weren't successful. So we've been pursuing, you know, different grant funds to to help fund the Eel River Repairion Trail. And I'll have a couple of pictures after that, after this, to kind of show what that is. But you can, you see here, there's been successive grant applications that haven't been funded, but we've been building, you know, the documentation for the project. And with each grant application, I think we're able to really reuse a lot of the old work. We currently have an application in for the 2020 ATP Active Transportation Program. And that was submitted in September, and we'll find out in a year. So just, you know, a little reminder of what that project is. It provides, you know, connectivity here between Edwards Drive and Davis Street. And, you know, has the opportunity to do some, you know, add a little trailhead here. You know, just continue to allow the community to see the river. You know, we're looking at a multi-use trail here. And then also the opportunity to help, you know, improve the vegetation in the area. Just another view of, you know, the project and some of, you know, some of the work that the city's put into this so far. You know, can see here on the bottom, the connection to Edward Strives, improvements, you know, a little trailhead, and the trail coming through here, and then connection to Davis Street. And, you know, part one of, you know, a trail that'll get you from Garberville to Trinidad someday. Let's start somewhere. Are there questions on either of those two? Kyle, I don't know if you want me just to kind of keep bowling through or?
Yeah, I think, I think this would be a good opportunity. These projects are kind of, you know, one is obviously wrapped up now. Or basically, we're in the very final stretches. We did some improvements on, next to the one-on-one off-ramp. And I'm pretty sure that that wraps up our punch list of items. There will be a seating, a grass seating and flower seating on that intersection. And then obviously, the trails, when we've, we've made multiple jabs to try to find a funding source to do this, this bike access trail. And really, you know, the council's, you know, major priority over the years has been river access and trying to create really a good quality recreational asset to really one of the amazing features of town, which is, which is the river here. So, so I do want to thank Rebecca for all of her work and GHD in total. We've had a lot of different partners working on the ATP project. And certainly, one of our last steps towards the end of December was trying to take advantage of really all these pieces in place to push the final sidewalk improvements down Davis Street. And, and so the city's, you know, put up funds and that project has been completed. And I've already seen, you know, people using that sidewalk who otherwise would be walking out in the street. So I think these have been, been very good projects. And we're hopeful that we'll hear back on the ATP project relatively soon. Even if that project is not particularly successful, you get a lot of information and feedback from the, from the state as to how to make it more competitive for the next round. So, you know, so Rebecca's going to talk a little bit more about projects moving the city forward in, in other areas, most notably hazard mitigation grants. So Rebecca, can you, can you chime in on those and move the PowerPoint forward?
Yep, yep. So that brings us to the drinking water system. There's a couple of things moving forward there. So the city was successful in obtaining a planning grant. And we have a preliminary design for, you know, replacement of high-priority water distribution system, you know, sections of lines, including, you know, valves, fire hydrants. We've also, you know, got the preliminary work on a new water tank. And then the preliminary work on installing a redundant water line under the Eel River. If folks may be aware, the city had a really successful project several years ago to to re-engage the wells over in the metropolitan area and really nice backup water system, but it's connected to the main system with some pretty shaky pipe that goes through the Caltrans Bridge. So part of that component was to look at that. The city's really done a forward-thinking job. We've got Sequa Complete for all those. So we've done, you know, all the environmental work, understand, you know, the needs, have the mitigations in place. Sixty percent design has been completed for portions of the project. And moving forward, what we've done is we've essentially, you know, split the project up into a couple of pieces. Let me see. Yeah, let me see here. So we're focusing on the main distribution pipeline project and potentially working with the state to replace those high-priority distribution lines. We've peeled off two other projects because the state has funding caps and they're only going to give you, you know, so much money for each project. In, um, 2019, the city of Rialto, uh, the staff participated in the local hazard mitigation planning process. It's a process led by Humboldt County. The plan gets updated every five years. Um, the city, you know, has an action list and, you know, actually a whole annex devoted to, you know, reviewing and, you know, looking at hazards for just the city of Rialto. But the end is this action list, it says, here's the projects we'd like to implement. Um, two of those, uh, two of those projects are the, excuse my spelling mistake on here. The Eel River Water Line Replacement, like I just mentioned. And then, um, what we call the Douglas Tank Seismic retrofit. And actually, we just retrofit through replacement. Um, so as a result of the fires in the fall of 2020, the, um, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA put out, uh, funds to the state of California to help, um, fund mitigation projects that would reduce future hazards. Rialto is in a really good position, participated in the local hazard mitigation planning process, submitted, um, three notice of interests for the water line crossing, the seismic retrofit and the fire hydrants. Um, the notice of interest for the water line and the tank seismic, uh, retrofit were accepted. The fire hydrants were denied. Rialto was not the only one. It seems like FEMA wants people to find other ways to fund fire hydrants. But it's really great news that those two notice of interests were accepted. And so the next step is going to be to complete a full hazard mitigation application. And I think that's an item, you know, after my engineering update. But just also wanted to give the city a little framework of this grant program because I, um, it's a program that I've worked with other communities. For example, Fortuna, McKinleyville and Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District to really successfully bring in funds to Humboldt County. So, you know, like I mentioned, the city participated in the plan update. So we've invested that time. Um, you've never really received funds back from this, from this program. And, um, like I mentioned, we have seen, you know, over 25 million in hazard mitigation funds be awarded to projects in Humboldt County, ranging from, you know, uh, tank replacements, water line replacements, to, you know, electrical upgrades, um, generators. So just, um, you know, sort of, I guess, want to see you get your fair share or just, you know, I, I, I see this as potentially a very successful program. Um, you'll see later, it's a very onerous grant application, but, um, I think there's a lot of opportunities. So those are really the two things I wanted to hit on for the water system was just that we're about to close out the planning grant. We've got a project we'd like to submit to the state board for the distribution system. And then we're looking to target the FEMA program for these other two projects. Um, and again, I could maybe talk a little bit more about sort of the ins and outs of the hazard mitigation grant under the other item. Questions?
Are there any questions, um, for Rebecca?
And, and I've got, I've got an update on wastewater next as well. I'm not totally finished, but just wanted to maybe give a little break. I can keep going and throw off questions.
Anyone have any questions at this moment about what's, uh, the aforementioned topics? Can speak up if you do.
Actually, I have a question.
Um, Councilmember Carter.
So it says the city's never received these funds for mitigation projects to date. Why is that? Do, I mean, maybe that's a bonehead question, but I just, why?
Just haven't asked and haven't, you know, haven't been this well positioned. Getting the planning funds has really positioned the city really well. The hazard mitigation program likes to see that you've, you've done your homework. And so we've got the CEQA done, um, and the, the way that we did it, we included what's called federal crosscutters. So we've also done the analysis at the federal level. So it makes, those two projects make for very competitive applications. Um, I would say maybe just readiness to proceed. And I don't know how much, you know, the previous update that happened. I guess that would have been 2014 that the city participated in.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just chime in there quickly. Um, so part of the work that was done on both the, the seismic line across to, uh, to Metro Wells and the tank, uh, replacement, part of that work has been done under, uh, previous grants. So, um, under Prop 1. So there's already information that's, that's been developed, uh, for those, uh, to get them ready for, for preparation for, for the application.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I'm going to dive in and finish off. So the, the last was just covering wastewater, um, Eric's, or excuse me, Derek's on the line. Um, so we, another grant that, uh, GHD assisted the city in obtaining, um, was a planning grant from the state board, um, to look at the wastewater system. And a majority of it is the sanitary sewer evaluation. Um, we've currently, uh, completed, you know, essentially the, uh, GIS data collection, um, in the city's system. Um, and we're about to start, uh, initiate a flow study. So we're working with a subconsultant who's going to come in and put, um, flow meters in key manholes. And we just verified those with Derek today. Um, and then they'll collect data over, I believe, a six-week period. And we'll, we'll get to see the different sort of flows from the different sections of the system, which is going to kind of give us information. What we're concerned about is that there's different, um, inflow and infiltration. So it's different ways that water's getting into your sewer system, either through like cracks in the sewer pipes or, you know, potential, uh, unintended, uh, connections and/or potentially in infiltration into manholes. And so this is the first step in, in understanding, you know, how do the flow characteristics of your collection system work? The eventual intent there is to identify, you know, different pipelines to be, um, replaced and bring that inflow and infiltration down, which reduces the flows that come to your treatment plant, you know, and have long-term, you know, uh, cost reduction, uh, components. Um, we're also looking at some pieces on the treatment side for disinfection, um, as well. So, um, that's moving forward. And that's essentially what I had, um, what I had to date. I'll put up my little summary and, yeah, see if there's any other questions.
Yeah, I had a question.
Go ahead.
So what, what, what do you actually, you, you're putting together information for a grant to improve our wastewater system, is that correct?
So we have already obtained the grant. So you have a funding agreement with the state board for a planning grant. And the results of that planning grant are going to help inform, you know, what the, you know, where we can target within the city's, uh, sewer, you know, collection pipe network to reduce that, um, inflow and infiltration into the system.
So, so this is, we have, we, this is the 500,000 or whatever it was?
Yeah.
That we had on. And so that money is going towards GHD now planning out the actual physical things that we can do to make our system better. Is that, have I got that right?
Correct, yeah. And there's, yeah, there's a couple of components. A majority of it, again, is the collection system. So there's also some, um, some treatment components and also some, there's some right-of-way and analysis related to, um, you know, the work we did for the, um, Painter Street line that was incorporated into this. So I think the exciting next step, like I said, is that we'll get information from this flow monitoring. And so that'll be fun for the city to see and just sort of, you know, get a better feel for your collection system. And, you know, what we're anticipating is probably some of the older areas are going to have, you know, higher infiltration rates. There's, you know, some areas of the system that we know are newer, where we haven't targeted flow monitoring because we don't really have as many concerns. And then, once we're able to better understand the system, one of the next steps will also be to potentially do some camera work. So we'll send little, once the flows go down, we'll send some little cameras in there and we'll be able to check out and see where some of the specific issues are. Hopefully, I'm also hope, hoping we'll be able to, uh, fill in some blanks on the collection system. Even with all the GIS work that we did, there were a couple of areas where, um, we weren't, we still weren't quite sure how everything connects or exactly. There might, is there something under somebody's house somewhere or just? So it'll be nice to, to do the camera work to kind of finalize that. So I think it's moving along well and the information is, you know, valuable.
So will this, will this, or, um, seek to identify pipes that are, that are leaking the water in that is bringing our eye up? This is to identify where those are and what the cost would be to essentially dig that area up and replace it with something that's not a problem. And then, and then after that, we got to go find the money, obviously, to do that.
Yep, yeah. And there's lots of different technologies, again, depending on what we find, you know, and depend on, on the areas of the system. So, you know, I think in some areas we may replace, but in some areas you could potentially do some, you know, cast in place or some pipe bursting. So, you know, I think one of the other things too is to look at, well, what's the appropriate technology to address the issues? You know, it's really, it gets really pricey to dig stuff up and replace it. Are there other, you know, technologies that can address the inflow at a reduced cost? So I think that'll be part of the evaluation as well, or I know it will be.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Carter, I think you're, you, do you have additional questions?
No, good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Tim Johnson, are you?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Garnes. Rebecca, I have a question regarding the sanitary sewer evaluation study. And, uh, under the disinfection analysis, we, we, you talked about or didn't talk about, uh, muscle study completed. What, uh, the, could you give us the results and the significance of that study?
And I don't have the final results yet, but essentially the muscle study found muscles, which is unfortunate. I guess fortunate, meaning you have a very healthy, diverse, you know, ecological community, you know, in your river. So that's, I mean, I guess on the upside, that's great. Um, but we want to make sure that we protect it. So what it does is it, it's going to kick in, um, stricter ammonia limits. So right now what we're doing is we're, you know, the regional board has set up a framework, um, one of which is, gives you sort of a little bit of flexibility to look at different conditions. So, um, Derek and his folks have done, done some bench testing. So we kind of understand sort of the parameters within, within which the system can currently operate. And now we'd like to take a look at, okay, you know, the first analysis said, well, this is your limit. And of course, if they're just going to give you one number, it's going to be worst case, worst case, worst case, worst case. So what we're doing is, is taking a look at what's called a floating limit evaluation to, you know, to determine, okay, well, in the winter, when, you know, the temperatures and pH are this, you know, this is how ammonia is toxic to our muscles versus the summer, you know? So look at those two different conditions and compare that to how the treatment plant performs and see, you know, see where those line up. So we're in the middle of that analysis and I don't have the results yet. It's, again, the, the, the fact that you have such an ecologically diverse river means that we have to be more protective of water quality, which can sometimes result in the need for increased treatment, which can sometimes result in cost. But we're not quite to that determination yet.
Does, does this mean that, uh, our, our next NPDS permit is going to be stricter than we currently have? Or?
And Derek, feel free to jump in at any time. Essentially, we're looking at two, we're looking at a different method of chlorination to address one issue. So, you know, we're sort of weighing options. So in the end, you know, we have to comply with certain limits. If we switch our method of chlorination, it is likely that the city's next permit would include some new limits that aren't there now. But again, these are things we're all weighing.
Now, in our, in, in our sanitary sewer evaluation study that's ongoing for the next couple of years, I, I would imagine that we would, you know, all of this leads to plans and grants and funding mechanisms to do a ton of repairs in not just the collection system, but also the plant. And that means getting ammonia out of the, out of the river. And I assume that we would be applying for funding for that during that cycle.
So I, I kind of wanted to add to the ammonia situation and the NPDS permit. Um, we are looking into getting our, our NPDS permit renewed by October, I believe, of 2022. So we're starting those negotiations. And, um, for the disinfection analysis, what we're trying to do is eliminate the disinfection byproduct at the wastewater plant. And with the muscle study, that kind of dictates what, like Rebecca had mentioned, what levels of ammonia we can discharge. As of right now, with the new plant, we are disinfecting with free chlorine and we have little to no ammonia at all. So it's kind of gotten, with the newer technology that we have currently, uh, we, we don't discharge ammonia. So that kind of fell off the radar as being something that we needed to test for. And that's something we want to bring back up. And that's what we're negotiating with the regional board to kind of give us an idea of what our limits could be so we could potentially, instead of going to, uh, UV disinfection, which is extremely power consumption, you know, consuming, uh, we are going to look at the chloramine disinfection, which will achieve the same level of disinfection, but it's adding ammonia to the chlorine to, to disinfecting chloramines, but it doesn't have disinfection byproducts. So what we've been doing is just doing the muscle study and kind of, uh, starting the conversation with the regional board to kind of see what our parameters would be as a cost-effective way of, of still maintaining compliance with disinfection without having the byproduct.
Derek, doesn't the addition of chlorine, uh, inject the halocytic acids into, you know, the, the wastewater effluent?
Yes, what, what happens, uh, without going too much into the science of it, is it's breakpoint chlorination is once you've gotten to a certain point of chlorine dosing, you get into what's called free chlorine, which is kind of, I call, I, I would refer to it as like, uh, kind of like an insurance. Do we measure the free chlorine? We know that everything that chlorine is going to react with, organics, non-organics, ammonia, nitrogen, all that stuff. We've gotten into free chlorine. That's kind of an insurance policy to state that we've gotten to complete disinfection. But the unfortunate drawback is that the free chlorine has the tendency to radically combine with organics and cause these disinfection byproducts, which are for California waterways extremely stringent. So that's why we're kind of in this situation is because we do disinfect with just chlorine and as opposed to the alternative methods that, that don't so radically combine with stuff to make, uh, byproducts.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, are there any hands raised or, um, emails?
Apparently there are no hands raised.
And no emails, thank you, thank you.
Mayor Garnes, if I could just make one additional quick comment. Um, what Derek is talking about, what Rebecca is ultimately talking about is really the most cost-effective way of meeting very strict environmental regulations on the Eel River. And what Derek is exploring is, is potentially an avenue that could save, uh, you know, significant amounts of dollars, um, while meeting all of the environmental regulations. Um, UV disinfection, which is an alternative that's becoming more and more popular, uh, would definitely meet those regulations, but the cost is higher. And so what we're really, you know, part of what we're looking at is, is, uh, is essentially cost benefit of how to meet these regulations in the most cost-effective manner possible.
Thank you. And thank you, Rebecca, and thank you, Derek, for your, well, Rebecca, for your presentation and Derek, for your excellent explanation. And thank you, Kyle, for kicking it there at the end. Make sure we were really clear. Okay, if there are no questions, no further questions, we will then move on to the update from the chief of police on Measure Z. Page 33 in your packets.
Good evening, Mayor Garnes, members of the council.
Hi, Steve.
As you guys are probably aware, the police department has received funds from Measure Z for the last several years. Uh, this is paid for Sabrina's position as the records clerk in the police department. Uh, those funds, uh, were decreased by 30% in fiscal year 1920. And for the current fiscal year, the allocation, we fell off the list and we weren't allocated anything. In part, this is because the amount of funds collected in Measure Z has decreased since it was initially. the amount of funds collected in Measure Z has decreased since it was initially passed. And it's predicted that the amount of discretionary funds will reach zero about 2025. That may or may not be sped up by the COVID pandemic that we're in. And because there's this decrease in discretionary funds, the Measure Z Committee, which allocates the, the monies, um, has requested that submitters do one-time costs rather than, um, increased or continuing personnel costs. So we're going to change our application a little bit this year. And instead of, uh, trying to fund Sabrina's position, once again, we're going to go with a one-time cost for in-car computers. In 2015, the state passed the Racial and Identity Profiling Act. This act requires police departments to collect data every time they detain somebody. Uh, traffic stop, pedestrian contact in which the person is actually detained. Any, almost any arrest is preceded by the person being detained. And in order to, the data they want collected is a series of questions on the, the police officer's perceived determination of the detainee's race, religion, English as a second language and several other questions. And then that forms a tree that depending upon how the officer answers those questions can open up more questions for a total of a possibility of forty-three different questions. Now, this was implemented, uh, in three tiers. The law enforcement agencies throughout the state were divided into three categories depending upon size. All of the agencies in Humboldt County follow, uh, fall into the third tier, the smallest departments. So the, the largest agencies, California Highway Patrol, LAPD, they've been collecting this data for a couple of years now. And they say it takes approximately, depending upon, uh, uh, your officer's skill, about five minutes per detainee to complete. And they're highly recommend that the, uh, information be entered as soon as possible after the detainment, one, so that it's accurate and two, so that it gets done. Currently, the department does not have any computers in any of the patrol cars. And so our Measure Z application for this year is to try and rectify that. It would be to purchase, uh, five, you know, in-car computers with the mounts and the necessary hardware, one for each car. And, uh, the officers would then be able to collect this data in the field, uh, rather than what I'm afraid is going to happen is trying to get it done in the last 10 minutes of their shift and, and forgetting, uh, answers to most of the questions and not doing, uh, the fair share. And as everybody knows, if your data isn't accurate, it's pretty much worthless. So that's what we have going for this year's Measure Z application. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Is there anything the city can do to, um, the city council can do to assist you?
Well, when the committee starts, uh, holding hearings, uh, it would, you know, might be appropriate to have somebody other than myself come and speak. Uh, it's not uncommon for, uh, city managers or council members to speak at, at those meetings.
Okay. Thank you. We will. Let us know what we need to show up for you.
Those, those take place usually in March.
Okay. Um, questions from council? Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, do, uh, we have, we have cameras on our officers, don't we?
We do have body cameras for all of the officers.
Are, are you able to, I guess in a way, whether it's Bluetooth or something, is it able to stream the, the video into the computers?
So the way the cameras currently work is at the end of the shift, the officers dock their camera. That is uploaded into the cloud and then from the cloud, it can be dispersed to wherever it's needed.
So, so pretty much after a shift, whatever went on, through, through the video filming is, is downloaded somewhere.
Yeah, it's, it's uploaded into the cloud. And then the officers can also access it if they've got the app on their phone through their, their own phone. And it doesn't need to be, uh, it, it is Bluetooth capable. That's done through Bluetooth and it doesn't need to be docked at that point in time. So if you're thinking they could go back and look at their video for some of the answers to that questions, that is a possibility, but it's also very time consuming.
I, I understand. And, uh, do we, do we run the, the videos all the time when we're, you know, I hear stuff on news that X, Y happened somewhere, but his camera wasn't on. Is our camera on most of the time when they have these, um, or is there times that you picked it to turn it on and times you picked it, you don't turn it on?
The, the policy is that it's supposed to be on anytime that you contact anybody in the field. The reality of the situation is that especially for the older officers that didn't, that this came to them after they were trained and it's something they have to learn. The newer officers are much better at turning it on because it's something they've always had to do. The older ones like myself occasionally forget, but the idea is that it's supposed to be on anytime you talk to somebody.
All right. I think, I think it's a good idea. I think many for the protection of both sides, but it protects our, our agency a lot.
One, they make, they make great evidence. And two, you're right. It is, we've had a, a number of complaints in the last month and it's real easy to sit down and watch the body cam view and see what actually happened.
Terrific. Good. I'm, I'm glad you're working to get the computers. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mayor Garns, uh, Chief, what kind of dollar value are you talking about for five in-car computers?
So there's a couple of possibilities. I'm aware that Fortuna has the, uh, they have equipped their cars with the, uh, mounting hardware. And then they have about five or six computers that get rotated between cars. That's one possibility. We rarely have more than, than three officers, uh, on duty at a time. Um, and so we could settle with three computers. The computers themselves are about two to, two, $2,000 to $2,500. And the mounts are between $1,500 and $2,000.
So we're talking about $10,000 to $15,000?
Um, I think more, yeah. More on the, the $15,000 end. It's a little bit less than what we've asked for from Measure Z in the past. I don't know if that really makes any difference or not. We ask for a lot less than the, the other police departments, but we always get prioritized down at the very bottom.
There's something in the equity. We ask for less and get less.
There's, there's something to be said for that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I tried that last year and we didn't get anything. So.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going, we're going to the minus, I guess. We're going to be contributing. Thanks again.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, no questions. Just thanks, Jeff. And, uh, like Mayor Garn said, just let us know if we can help you out.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, um, hands raised or emails on this subject?
Currently, I see no hands raised.
No email.
Thank you. Then we will move on, um, to discussion and possible action authorizing the city manager to sign a scope of services with GHD to make applications for HMGP grants and related approval of resolutions fourteen seventy-six dash twenty twenty-one, amending the budget accordingly. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garns and members of the council. So, uh, just as a recap, uh, back in 2018, the city participated in the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. The council recently adopted Rio Del's Annex for that plan. Uh, that makes us eligible for certain hazard mitigation grant program dollars. Um, with all the disasters in California, uh, recently primarily fire, uh, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, um, through, uh, legislation, uh, has, uh, increased the amount of hazard mitig, mitigation grant funding uh, for, uh, agencies in California. So, um, uh, what we have tried to do is, is basically find the most shelf-ready uh, options, uh, for, uh, for the federal government, for Cal OES to, to approve, uh, and to buy into. So a lot of these, um, items, they really kind of tie into multiple items. But primarily, the, the, the primary risk to Rio Del infrastructure is seismic. And so we've gone through a long period of time where we have not had a, you know, a significant seismic event, but it is just a matter of time. Uh, we do have a new piece of infrastructure out at the Metropolitan, uh, Humboldt-Rio Del Business Park. It is the city's backup water supply. Um, that system used to supply, uh, and be the primary source of water for the city. So in, uh, in looking at the current infrastructure, uh, in the long term, it would be very beneficial uh, to, uh, work towards, uh, doing, um, a, uh, essentially a line underneath the river that's seismically resilient and connects the city to the metropolitan wells, uh, thereby ensuring that we have, uh, even in a seismic event, a two sources of water for the city. The council and staff have done a lot of work over the past few years, uh, increasing the resiliency of our system against drought. Uh, and so this is kind of the natural extension, um, of, of these programs. Uh, in addition, uh, the, the other project is a, um, essentially a water tank replacement to increase, uh, storage capacity, uh, capacity, capacity that can be used during seismic events um, or during, uh, major fire events or other, uh, similar type of situations, including drought resiliency. Um, so in looking at the hazard mitigation grant, uh, in the city's annex, and these were really some of the most, uh, quote unquote shovel-ready projects for the city. And we did explore uh, fire hydrants for, for, uh, for the city. Um, however, unfortunately, that did not, uh, meet the, uh, requirements, um, which is, which is good. So in, in the sense that, uh, we're not spending a lot of time, money and effort pursuing a grant that's going to be denied. So, uh, so the pre-application process is basically uh, a submission, uh, to find out if you're, if it's worth the time to continue, uh, the application effort. So based on what we're seeing with the grants, uh, what other agencies, uh, in the county are being funded with, uh, which includes a lot of the seismic river crossing, uh, enhancements, uh, we do believe the city is in a relatively good position to, uh, pull these, uh, these funds down. So for every dollar uh, that, uh, that the city spends on these improvements, we can leverage an additional $3, uh, to, uh, to basically help prepare, uh, the city for uh, future disaster uh, in the community. So we do have Rebecca still on the line. And so I'll just ask Rebecca to chime in and see if there's anything, uh, additional to add to that.
Nope, nope. Um, I guess I could think the one thing that I would add, especially if you're looking at the scope is just to, to understand just the onerous nature of these applications. FEMA really wants to, you know, really ensure that the project meets the, you know, their criteria. So they have a very onerous application if you want to be competitive. So, you know, we need to be putting, and they've got a very detailed form. So and just also like Kyle mentioned, I think the city has done a lot of work to prepare. So while those scopes and those dollars seem really high, I'm actually working on a couple other applications that are, you know, you know, uh, more on the order of $30,000. Um, but the city's done a lot of work, especially on the environmental side to get ready. So, um, so it's half and half there. Just, just want, when folks are looking at the scopes of understanding that it is, these are very onerous applications, probably the most onerous type of application that I work on. Um, but that the city has done a lot of work to get ready. So we're able to draw from the planning grant work to, I think, really be ahead of the game. And I think the city is going to show really well in terms of competitiveness and, and shovel-ready, um, for this program. And I'm willing to answer any questions that folks may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Um, yeah, I guess this is more for Kyle. I see the, the deadline for applications is March 5th, which is coming right up around the corner. So I was just wondering if we could maybe agenda a follow-up on that in one of our February meetings, just get a little update on how that's going?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, we can, we can bring something back, um, to the council and to, let's see, our February, February sixteenth meeting, if that works?
Works for me.
And, and I'd like to say, well, the first step that we do for this program is, and you'll see in the scope, is a preliminary benefit cost analysis because there's a make or break threshold that every project has to meet to say that your benefits, you know, exceed your costs. And so, you know, we, we would at that time have that information to present as well, just sort of to, in terms of, of timing wise.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, no, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I'm good. No questions.
Um, are there any hands raised or, or emails?
Currently, I see no hands raised.
No email.
Thank you. So, um, is there then a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the scope of services agreement and approve resolution fourteen seventy-six dash twenty twenty-one?
Still moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Amanda's second.
I'll beat you to it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, council. I'll be talking to you later, Kyle. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
So, um, for everyone's information, we are, we have an item discussed impossible action, discussion impossible action on SB two planning grant. Our community services director is unable to be here tonight, so we are pulling that item, um, and rescheduling it for, uh, probably the next meeting, but definitely a future meeting. And, um, there is one email that came in regarding the SB two planning grant. And we are going to hold that email until the topic comes up on the fut, on the next agenda, when it's brought back so that it can all tie in together. So, um, we appreciate the email and we, we have it and it will be read when the item is agendized in the future. And with that, I will move on to appointment of ad hoc committee related to public waste bin selection.
Thank you, Mayor Garns. Thank you. Um, so one of the more, uh, meaty topics for the council to consider is um, the, uh, various public, uh, waste and recycling bins throughout town, uh, have been slated for a replacement. In the current budget, we have about $8,000 for the replacement of the, of the bins. Uh, in addition to which, I think we are going to be able to leverage some, uh, non-city funds, either through HWMA or uh, through Cal Recycle, uh, to help fund the replacement. So, uh, the ad hoc committee would be basically reviewing, uh, design proposals uh, and working with staff and coming back to the council with a recommendation uh, as to the, uh, the replacements for these, you know, visible pieces of, uh, infrastructure in town. Um, I did talk with council member Woodall last week, and while she's not here at the meeting tonight, she did express an interest of being on the committee to me. Uh, but, uh, other than that, um, we're just looking for, uh, a two-member ad hoc to, uh, help work with staff to, uh, select, uh, the next bins.
Okay, thank you. And I see Amanda's hand raised.
Yes.
I was going to suggest her. She looked like somebody that knew how to pick out a garbage can.
Give me all the garbage. It's, it's an issue close to my heart. Garbage. Yes.
Well, if no, if no one has an objection, then we will have councilmember Carter and councilmember.
Sounds great.
All right. That's great. Thank you, Amanda.
Yes.
And with that, it brings us to council, uh, reports. Mayor Pro Tim? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor Garant. Uh, nothing really to report, but I do want to welcome back uh city clerk Dunham. Uh, great to have you back in in your chair.
Thank you.
You're here. And um uh Mayor Pro Tim, is there, now, did I hear that the last chance grade slipped out?
Yes, it uh what, over the week and a half ago or so, there was a slide there. Uh I I think from my personal point of view, what we need is about a two-month closure there. I I think it would help all of us on the various committees get a more sense of urgency that uh something needs to be done sooner rather than later. And uh you know, a little bit of trickle of mud uh is an inconvenience, but uh it's resolved in a day or two. And that's not what I see as a a threat that's gonna move a project forward with any kind of speed at all.
So is is it Pat? I mean, can you get, can you go in that direction?
Can
I mean, at in this moment, I mean, did it slip out and it's it's closed like in the in the moment, or do they make some detour?
There there's really no detour available. You know, a we're we're looking at a project that's not going to go to construction uh for another decade plus. And that's just way too long, in my view.
Right.
Um. I've been on a committee for, I think, six years, and you know, we're we're about two steps closer to making some kind of a recommendation. It's you know, I hope I hope something happens in my lifetime.
Okay. It's a slow process. All right. Councilmember Wilson, thank you, councilmember Johnson, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Uh, just before I step on mine, I was gonna just uh say that I hear Mr. Johnson and I I agree with the process of it needs to go forward. The I hear they're doing some work at night to do some road grading or bringing something up to level. They're gonna close it for a certain number of hours at the in nighttime and do something. But if they don't, if they don't move ahead, and and I guess this is I don't know if this is something the council could put a letter through Mr. Johnson to deliver to the the next time he goes to the meeting that um if they if they horse around long enough, they're gonna have it out, and they're gonna be gonna bury a great big hole there. And that's gonna cut off uh the northern end of this county real severely. And in the past, things have gotten pushed out because it was more convenient rather than bite the bullet and do what needs to be done. So I would hope that that could happen. So I encourage your, I appreciate your effort, Gordon, to to cha- to champion this as long as you have. Uh, the other thing is, we are, we've released with HWMA, we've released the uh the bid, or not the bid, I guess, the jobs qualifications for the executive director of HWMA. And those are due by, I believe, February 12th is the deadline for the and you can find the application and requirements and information about it on their on the HWMA website. And so if you know of someone that's in a administrative, hands-on, wants garbage, nothing, nothing aimed at Amanda, but the garbage is a big deal in your in your county.
Big deals.
And um the CRV thing just dominates conversations, but um all the other types of issues, they've got now treated wood waste problems has has gone back, is is going back under the governor's direction to uh become toxic again, and you've got to deal with it. There is some s- uh stuff, I believe, with this thirteen thirteen eighty-three, I believe, is the SB thirteen eighty-three or eighteen. Maybe it's thirteen eighty-three.
It's thirteen eighty-three.
Thirteen eighty-three. And uh that's gonna impact the city uh and all the all of the jurisdictions on uh organic waste. And if you get a chance to Google it and look it up, uh it's got some extensive things, particularly for restaurants and schools. If you produce food, you you just you just can't take the waste and throw it in the in the landfill garbage anymore. You have to save what's good and make sure it's edible and give it to somebody that doesn't have anything. So um but they're basically putting responsibility back on the local jurisdictions. And uh this is, I believe, under the direction of CalRecycle, which is the ones that also had this bottle bill figured out. So uh it's something to keep our eye on is as things come out. And the there was a lady there that did zero waste, and I know Julie had listened to to zero waste. And they had some some good things. So maybe down the road, we might consider having zero waste do a presentation to us on agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Yes. Um, so this past week, I attended the League of California Cities Transportation Communications and Public Works Policy Committee. Um, it was just our first one of the year, so um I'll boil down what came from that was our twenty twenty-one work plan. We'll focus on protecting SB one funds. Um broadband deployment was a major issue on everybody's docket because of the COVID and the, you know, virtual nature of all our meetings. Um and in a rural area like here, I think, yeah, broadband matters. Um and then infrastructure resiliency, which includes stormwater infrastructure and underground infrastructure. So um it sounds like those are the things we'll focus on this year. Um so there's that. And then we have a nuisance committee meeting tomorrow, and Julie's not here to tell everyone that, so I'll do it. Um if there's any members of the public out there watching or listening who would like to come to our code enforcement nuisance advisory committee meeting, it's tomorrow at three. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Um I too, last week, attended the or zoomed the environmental quality policy committee for the league and on Friday, the community services. And it was the same thing. We set up our twenty twenty-one uh work work agenda. Um but one of the things that um was very intriguing, actually, on the community services side was um the i- in the governor's budget, there will be um funds available for uh small um rural and um kind of disadvantaged communities that do not have the availability of redemption centers. And so they, when he was um, when our legislative analyst was um going over all of this information, he actually called out Humboldt County as one of the counties that has no that has no access to a redemption center. So um hopefully, when that comes up, he's going to let me know. We're gonna hope maybe the city will uh, you know, write a letter or um we can reach out to them, reach out to the county for assistance. But um he told me, let me know when it's when it's time. So um I think that's a, that was one of the most important things that that um I heard on that um community services policy committee. But we are also looking at uh senior issues and um um youth, youth issues. So um it it's it looks like there's gonna be a lot of focus this year. There's a lot of monies that we looked like we were coming up short because of all the money that had to go out because of COVID. Um but because of money that came in from taxes that was unforeseen, at least the amounts were unforeseen, we are actually, the the state of California is actually back in surplus. So um and and starting to put money in the rainy day funds again, um a rainy day fun basket again. So um that was an another uh very important thing that came up. So it was um well-attended. It was, it was um I I think a really good start to the to the year, and our next meeting is April fifteenth, if my memory serves. And um hopefully, we'll really hit it hard then when, because the bills will go in in February, and then they have to, you know, get to the desk and get to the the part where we start, you know, arguing over them or trying to get them, fighting for things. So um that's, that was about it for me. And um I think have I, I think I've called everyone's name. Julie's not here, so.
Mayor Garant?
Yes.
Uh, when you go back to with whatever meeting you sounded like, it would be one that would be appropriate. Uh, they need to be aware that CalRecycle has, since the COVID things started, has increased their reserves by not paying out CRV by a hundred million, by a hundred million dollars. And they have, uh, according to Rex, uh Supervisor Bone, they've got about a half a billion dollars sitting in their fund system that they have not paid out because nobody's got bottle. You can't, nobody can buy it. And so that would be certainly an area that would seem like it could, it could help disadvantaged communities in some form or another to access that money.
Okay, thank you. It is good to know. I may call you and uh get more information about that.
Call me when, yeah, call me and we'll talk.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Um yay, Karen. I'm glad you're back and on the mend or amended.
You feel much better.
Yeah, yay. All right, everyone. Um is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Second?
Checking it.
We have a motion in a second. So I will see you on our next regularly scheduled meeting, February second. Take care, everybody. Good night.
Bye now. Bye now.